I'd like to welcome Reverend Amanda Dasher from St. James Episcopal Church to lead us in the prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance of gifts that you have bestowed upon the people of this community, for the natural beauty of this land and the generous spirit of its people. We pray today for your wisdom and courage upon our mayor and city councilmen to make fair and meaningful decisions for our city. Give them compassion to understand the needs of all the people who call Fairhope home. Give them a sense of your justice so that they may do what is good and right in your eyes. Give them a sense of peace and trust as they work together for the common good. We also pray for our first responders and all those who put their lives in danger so that we might live in safety and peace. We pray for all those who are caring for the sick and suffering in our community, the doctors, nurses, caregivers, and therapists. We ask you to comfort those who suffer and grieve during this difficult season. Finally, we also ask you to protect those who are traveling during this holiday. May your love and blessings rest upon us all so that we may continue to become the people you call us to be. All this we pray through your son, Jesus Christ, whose light shines in the darkness this Christmas season and evermore. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, council. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the December 12 regular city council meeting and the December 12 work session. If you've had a chance to review those, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion, will you approve the minutes as presented?
Second. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number two is report of the mayor.
So I just first and foremost want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and then give everybody an update on the cold weather preparations that we're making. Want to make sure everybody knows that we are going to be shutting water off to the park restrooms starting on Friday, and they will be turned back on on Monday, just that's to save the pipes from bursting, so we'll be doing that hopefully. I don't, I doubt anybody will be out in the cold weather, but if they are, they won't be able to use the restrooms at one of the parks. So that, and then the other thing is next week on the 28th, we have Hot Chocolate with the mayor at the rec center. We did one this week with kindergarten through second grade and third through fifth. Next week, we have fifth through, fifth through seventh and, or eighth, and then ninth through 12th at nine and 10 o'clock at the rec center. And then also just want to remind everybody of the New Year's Eve festivities downtown. And next week, if you'll watch social media, they'll have some information on there on parking, children's activities, and everything. So that's all. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, moving on. Item number three is public participation for agenda items. Items five and six are public hearings, so this would be for items seven through 21. Come on, Gary.
Good evening, council and mayor. Gary Gover, 300 Lincoln Street. Agenda item number seven, sidewalks for Fairwood Boulevard and Blue Island Street. I'd like to recommend that there be more public engagement in the design of the project, especially for the lower part of Fairwood Boulevard. And if necessary, this could be done using the pre-construction engineering option that's available in the, in the grant or the contract. On item number 16, on impact fees, I'd like to recommend that as part of this, pursue the possibility of adding schools to the, to the group of impact fees so that, for example, things like services in supportive schools, like Safe Routes to School, could be funded in part by impact fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close public participation and move on to council comments. Councilman Burrell.
Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I want to thank everybody that worked for the city for a great year. Thank you, Mayor and council. Please be safe if you're out traveling. It's, it's gonna be cold, and so take care of your pets, bring them in if they live outside, and try to, try to take care of yourself. It's gonna be, as I said, I don't think we're gonna get any wintry weather, but it's gonna be cold. Wintry mix, I should say.
Counsel McConyers.
Yeah, just say Merry Christmas. That's all I've got.
Short and sweet, councilman B.
Short and sweet.
Just as short, Merry Christmas.
All right, I unfortunately have the naughty list to read out. That might take a little while, starting with Councilman Burrell, but no.
Of course.
No, I, I don't have anything. I, look, it's been, it's been a great year for the city of Fairhope, mostly in part to the people that we have working here that do such a good job taking care of everything that needs to be taken care of, not only for us as a council, before our community, and I'm incredibly grateful to get to be a part of it. So I do appreciate all the things that all of you guys do to make all that happen. And so Merry Christmas, and then we'll continue on with our agenda. Item number five is a public hearing. A request of Live Oak Properties LLC to rezone property from planned unit development to R1 low-density single-family. The property is approximately 3.79 acres and is located on the east side of Main Street, south of Parker Road. Hunter, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. I can make it.
Just, just kidding.
We have contemplated this. We've actually are gonna, gonna make it. This is currently a PUD. The plan is on the screen. This is a simple rezoning request to bring it to R1. There's no plan to look at, so the R1 dimensions will apply whenever it comes time for subdivision. That's pretty much it. This came as to the, from the planning commission with a recommendation of approval unanimous, and staff also recommends approval. Just for reference, that is at Main Street and Senate 98 and Parker Road.
That corner right there?
Yes, sir. That'll tell you, show you the empty lot just south of Parker Road.
Currently eight, set up for eight lots, is that what it looks like?
That is the PUD in place at this time. So while we don't know any plan, you're looking at, you know, number-wise, maybe four lots instead of eight.
Yeah, I kinda said on the radio, it's not, we're typically not dealing with requests to go from higher to lower. It's normally the reverse, so this is a welcome, welcome change. Well, let me, can I have somebody?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
And so I'd like at this time to open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to discuss this item, please come forward. Council, do you guys have any questions about item number five?
I have a couple of comments, and I do want to ask, I want to ask the, the owner of the property a quick question, if I may. First, my comment is that I did attend the, the homeowners association of the subdivision that's directly to the east of that, since I'm a member of the association, and there was no, there was no opposition to this, and they all saw that as a positive move. So thank you for that, Mr. Haley. I do want to ask you the question, and I don't know if the mayor has spoken to you or not, but there are some plans that'll be coming forward before the council and the Eastern Shore MPO for a sidewalk connecting the Eastern Shore Trail with our multimodal trail that runs along 98. If we were to construct that, that sidewalk, would you be willing to pay for that portion that's on the north side of that property?
I think I'm obligated by when we put lots in there to put a sidewalk.
It's a requirement of the subdivision when it's.
For the long part of subdivision regs. If we develop that, that there'll be a sidewalk that runs.
Okay.
The length of Parker Road is about.
It may be, but what's the width that's required?
I believe the five foot on the required width.
You know, we had talked about it, maybe slightly larger. Would you have any problem with requiring that, if it's like a six foot?
If you remember, Jack, about seven or eight years ago, the city sort of reconfigured that intersection. It's sort of dangerous, there was a wide apron there, and they brought the road to the north, and so there's a big right-of-way right there.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's also a place people park and unload trucks all the time, and I've had trash dumped there.
It's not your van's been parked there for a week, is it?
I've seen that, I saw that today, but it's constant, and I mean, I think a nice big wide sidewalk would help prevent some of that, too.
Okay, all right, hey, thank you.
And that is something we can look at, at the, when it's time for subdivision, part needs to be in the right-of-way, or?
Yeah, I just think we need to keep in mind that when we, whatever goes in there, it's gotta be, and it needs to match the remainder of that sidewalk.
Okay.
That would extend to 98.
Okay.
Four lane 98.
Councilman Burrell, do you have any other comments, questions? Council, any additional comments or questions on item number five?
Sounds good.
All right, seeing none, this will lay over till, for two weeks, to our next council meeting and take action on it then. All right, item number six is another public hearing. Request to establish initial zoning of June Nelson Long's property to B2 General Business District concurrent with conditional annexation to the city of Fairhope. The property is approximately 1.7 acres and is located on the northeast corner of Grino Road and Old Battles Road.
Thank you. Similar, there is no plans for this. We have never even had a discussion on what this may be, but the, the property is across from the public site, it's on the south, the new public's on the south of town. As you'll see, there was a condition that all those had to fall in dominoes before this would be contiguous to the city, but that has taken place, so it's in front of you for annexation to B2. The, and there's the, for reference, where that site sits in relation to the public site. B2 applies, so whatever uses and whatever is standard in the zoning will apply whenever anything is proposed there. It did come out of planning commission with a unanimous recommendation of approval, had one condition, again, that the public property was actually in the city. We struck that through because that condition has been met, and was that the three-minute timer?
No.
So you have a unanimous recommendation of approval from both the planning commission and staff?
I would not put you on the timer. Maybe, maybe. I did not that time. All right, so, so council, or I guess.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, ordinance introduced, and at this point, I will open up the public hearing for agenda item number six. All right, seeing no one, council, any questions or comments on item number six?
Yeah, Hunter, this, this doesn't have any bearing on my thoughts of whether or not we should conditionally, or rezonate to B2 upon annexation, but is it zoned, did the county zone that parcel in the recent zoning? I know they get some across.
Yes, and I don't know off the top of my head. Let me see if it's on the zoning map. No, this was not, on the left is not the original zoning map when we pulled this. I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but I'll get you that answer, what it was.
Okay, all right.
I, I think because this was single-family, that this was probably a state zoning, but it could have been one of their new community preservation. So I'll, I'll find that answer before we leave this meeting and let you know.
It says zoning district, Ballin County Community Preservation District.
That's what it was, and that's, that basically, and to, the short answer to that is what's there can be there and meet zoning. Anything that changes would have to go through, under the county zoning, would have had to go through them for a rezoning case.
I don't have a problem with B2 there, I just would, I did want to know, I'm kind of keeping an eye on what the county's doing in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for, for Hunter? All right, hearing none, we will let this lay over to the next council meeting. Moving on, item number seven is a resolution that the city of Fairhope, Alabama enters into an agreement with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation relating to a project for sidewalks along Fairwood Boulevard from Fairhope Avenue to Bayou Drive and from Patlin Drive to Jan Drive, and along Blue Island Street from Fairhope Avenue to Gayfer Avenue.
I move we enter into the agreement.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Council, any discussion? All right, just for the, just to ask the question, who is, has this already been designed and laid out, or is that part of the process?
Yes, sir, this is the funding agreement. We really can't do anything until we get this part done. As you know, Neil Schaefer has been selected. Hopefully, you'll see them back for you on the 9th to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract not to exceed, and then the design will start.
Perfect, thank you, Richard. All right, council, I've got a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a contract with Fulgems Inc. for urban forestry consultant for the undeveloped 108 acres known as the Triangle Property at the north gateway to the city with a not-to-exceed amount of $42,000.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Kind of motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second with the question of what exactly are they gonna be doing? Are they, are they, a forestry plan, is that what it is?
Yes, sir, the, the scope of work for this first year is to develop specifically for the Triangle Property, a forestry management plan that is, is totally encompassing, working with the design group to make sure that, that, that all is coordinated about preserving the urban forest, but also coming back to y'all eventually with, with what you want that property to be as far as an urban forest, as well as a mitigation plan for the invasive species that we're dealing with. And I think ultimately, our goal would be, once that template is formed, then we can, we can expand that to include all of our urban forest and our parkland properties that we have to manage, especially the invasive species part.
Which I hope is real simple, eliminate them.
Well, yes, it's just, it's the how, the process.
All right, council, I've got a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is a resolution to award construction of pickleball courts for Quail Creek Golf Course to American Tennis Courts, Inc., with a total bid proposal budgeted not to exceed $114,519, which for your references, about $10,000 under budget.
Make a motion, will you approve?
All right, I've got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I keep getting Kevin the opportunity to second.
Second, second, second.
Know if he's awake or not.
He's awake. Just listen.
All right, council, I've got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
How many courts is this? I'm trying to find it on here. How many courts will we wind up with, Mayor?
Six.
Six.
Okay, all right. Any other, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is a resolution to award new Volanta baseball field fencing for the Volanta Park baseball project to Cooper Fence Company LLC with a total bid proposal budgeted not to exceed amount of $75,950.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and council, this is not, I don't think it's an, this is not an itemized budgeted, it's just part of the overall package of what we budgeted for those fields.
Is this for four fields?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
All right, council, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 11 is a resolution to award annual contract for the fire extinguisher inspection services to Fire and Safety Commodities, Inc., with a total bid proposal budgeted not to exceed $17,000.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of the annual renewal of firewall support slash subscriptions for the IT department, purchased through Omnia Partners Public Sector to SHI International Corp., and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. Renewal, renewal budgeted at $35,500, price increased $15,077.16 for a total cost of not to exceed $50,577.16.
Can we, Jeff, can you answer a question before we make a motion on this? How did this go up 42, 43 percent?
It did not, it did not increase. I made a mistake with the budget. I don't know if I put the numbers in backwards. I think I may, should have put 53,000 instead of 35,000. I outlined to a, an email to the Treasury that I've got three line items that I will cut out this year in order to make up this difference of this, this mistake in order to.
But you did go back and look at your numbers, and it was just a mistake when you translated.
It was a mistake, yeah, so this hasn't, this, I think it maybe increased about 3%.
Well, we all make mistakes, that's okay. I move to approve the procurement.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 13 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement for the conversion of Munis from on-premises services to software-as-a-service for the IT department from Tyler Technologies as sole source provider in the state of Alabama, exempt from formal bid pursuant to the Code of Alabama, 1975, Section 41165113. Recurring free fees for the SaaS, is that right? SaaS?
SaaS.
SaaS, I knew I was probably gonna get that one. Will be $104,640 a year for three years, plus one-time fees of $4,000, for a total, yeah, for a budgeted total cost not to exceed the amount of $317,920.
So this one, I'm really not too happy about, to be honest with you. The Munis, Tyler Technologies is forcing us within three years to convert our Munis system from having an on-premise to their cloud solution. So instead of buying the hardware upfront, having everything in-house, we have to rely on them for the, for the, the backend, the database, the operating system, everything. So all their new customers are, are put on this platform, and they're giving us three years to move, and so I wanna, we, we're not gonna be able to do it this year, I want to try to, or I'm sorry, we'll, we'll try to do it by the end of the year, and that'll, that'll give us enough room, because what I'm afraid of, if we wait to the last minute, all the other on-premise customers will try to rush and do it at the same time, and we may not get, you know, get it in the correct timeframe. So, yeah, three-year total, so we have a, we'll have a three-year contract totaling a $317,920.
Council president, if I may. So Jeff, you, once you move that over to their cloud servers, how secure are they? And, you know, we, we spend money on firewalls every year, we spend money on all sorts of IT security that may have been priced based upon having all of this Munis software, does that?
I, I don't.
Are we gonna be paying, I mean, and we're already in those contracts, but are we gonna be paying for services that we don't completely need, and will those costs go down in the future, or does this company provide some type of security guarantee with this?
They, they have their solution. It's, we're up, we have to leave it up to them. That's kind of the downfall of having this type of solution. I mean, they, of course, they claim to have, you know, great security and great backup procedures, and we just have to kind of trust.
There's gotta be some kind of industry standard, and I'm sure they probably have a name for it.
Oh, there is, there's standards.
And they say that we're, you know, ISO level, this or that.
Right.
Do they?
So they, they are, they do have their certifications for, for doing this type of solution. Yeah, I just, you know, we, we spend a, a good bit of money, I mean, on our firewalls, and we have, I know, I know the protection that we have, and I spend a lot of time on it, and to hand it over to somebody else is just tough.
I know.
But it's just the way things are going now. Everything is, is cloud-hosted.
Yeah. I'll promise you that some adversaries are in that cloud.
Problem is, is we're kind of at their mercy.
We are, we are. It's got me, that's exactly it.
Lisa, do I have a motion or a second?
No, you do.
I do not.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, I've got a motion.
Second.
And a quick second. Council, any further discussion?
Show you I'm awake.
Item number 13. All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 14 is a resolution that the city council pursuant to Section 7.01 of the City of Fairhope Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Grants December 23, 2022, Christmas Eve holiday as a whole day for the fiscal year, and will be observed by all city personnel. Emergency and on-call employees will report to work as needed. Counsel, I just would like you to know that if any of you vote against this, you will be hated by just about everyone. But I will say that there, this, we did look into this, the mayor did, and we were one of the few municipalities, and the only municipality that was not doing this, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve then.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Lisa, how many holidays does that give us total?
I don't know.
Can you count them?
10.
In the legislature, or any person?
Only 10, then?
Which is less than most have, to be honest.
I'd say 10's about, in, in corporate world, 10's about.
Not governmental.
No, I can, yeah, I can tell you when I was, that, the one year that I had in government work, it was.
Well, the point is, we went from nine and a half to 10, which is to pretty, is very acceptable for those that are gonna complain about they didn't get the garbage picked up, so, you know, you have to have any, you know, ready for that.
Yeah, and it's, it's a lot of pressure voting to give you Christmas Eve off, three days before Christmas Eve, it's kind of, you know, nah, changed my mind, nah. So I do have a motion and a second, right?
Yes, she did.
Okay, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
And I think it's only, since, since Councilman Burrell likes percentage, I think it's only a 0.5% increase in our holidays.
0.5 increase in our holidays?
I don't think so. I'd say it's a 5% increase.
5% increase.
I think things, Kevin's doing math down there the whole time.
Actually, it's a half, or it's a little bit more than a half.
I'm in a hurry.
It's 0.55%.
All right. Item number 15 is a resolution that the city council approves the compensation and job classification plan, along with the grade order sheet, be amended and approved to reclassify the special projects and grants manager and the administration department to a grants coordinator in the Treasury Department and approves the grants coordinator job description.
Could you let me speak to you?
Please.
So when Jessica left, we looked at her job, and obviously, the job Jessica had, she did a great job at it, was compiled of different, different things that met her skillset. The film permits, the communications for utilities, the grants administration. So we kind of divvied that job up and put it in the, in the areas that it should be in, and then the thing that was left was the grants, so the grants administrator. So this is a position, we did take it to the personnel board, allowed them to review the job description, the pay classification, and did get their approval, so.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, council.
One question, council president, or one thing that we, we may choose to do would be to, to defund that grade 14S if it's not necessary. You okay with that? That way, we don't have to, we don't have a, a position that can be backfilled.
It's not defunding, it's actually changing that job description to.
Well, you're gonna fund the 10S, you would defund, you can eliminate the 14S, you don't need it, right?
Right, that's what we did.
Yeah, this is reclassifying the 14S, too.
Oh, you are reclassing, so you're doing that, take care of it, yes, I agree with that.
All right. Counsel, I entertain a motion on Item Number Fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Number Sixteen is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Tishler Beisch to perform professional financial consulting services to study update of impact fees for the City of Fairhope, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not to exceed, to be approved by the council.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Obviously, this is something we need to do periodically to stay...
It's hard to believe it's been five years.
Time flies when you're having fun, Jack.
Well, it was a lot of fun then, let me tell you.
And to Mr. Gober's comment, I think that's certainly something we could ask him about when they're, after, after we've made a selection and they're engaged.
Yeah, I think, I think Eric is shaking his head, and I think that's, I think that's because there's only certain things that it can be used for, and I'm not sure that the schools are one of those things.
But we already have an overlay district and send decent bit of extra...
But also, to Mr. Gober's point, though, is that you can, you can budget these towards sidewalks for the safety of schoolchildren, and that could be...
You can, but what you would probably have to do is placement. It would have to be done within the corporate limits, so depending on how vast the area of sidewalks you want to be, you might be able to fund some, but not a total connectivity. It would have to be relegated to corporate.
I think he's saying this was maybe a priority. We even talked about it on, with the subdivision that we talked about in the last meeting, that's going to the clump project out there. Things like that to keep in mind.
Thank you, Eric. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Number Seventeen is an application for restaurant liquor license by Christopher Cullen, El Barrio Fairup, LLC, DBA Nini Squares, located at 451 Magnolia Avenue. Chief, everything good? Awesome. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm still trying to place...
Well, I think that's the lawyer probably that drafted that, that address.
Okay, where is the, where's the...
Well, 455 is Brian's office, so I think it's the, 451 is the corner right there, right?
Okay.
I think it's his old office.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's what, that's what I thought. It's right there, it's Brian...
Old Kapeski Brett office.
Oh, that one.
Right there on the corner.
Yeah, okay. All right, I was going west of that, okay.
I wasn't thinking that.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Eighteen is an application for a beer-wine off-premises license by Dustin Hewitt, MMCS Services LLC, DBA Deli Depot Food Mart, store number 684, located at 355 South Reno Road. Let me just ask a question. Why is, why is it for off-premises license? What's the, is it something different? So do they not currently have the ability to sell just off? Okay, I got it, I got you.
Were you wondering why it's not on premises?
Yeah, I guess that's kind of...
I think it's...
On premises is you're going to be drinking.
You're going to be drinking there, okay.
This is off-premises buy and take with you.
Oh, to buy and walk out with?
I got you, okay. All right, makes, thank you for clarifying that.
After six years of you approving those...
Figured I'd ask at some point, better late than never.
I hope he's watching.
Hey, I didn't, you know, better late than never. All right, do I have a motion?
No, you do not.
All right, I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item Nineteen is an application for a beer-wine off-premises license by Dustin Hewitt, MMCS Services LLC, DBA Bay Shores Short Stop, store number sixteen, 687, located at 17026 USA Highway 181, Fairup, Alabama.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Everything good? I was just going to, yes, sir. Everything good at this location as well, chief or assistant chief?
And the next one, too.
Yes.
All right.
I want their handwriting.
Yeah, that's got to be, it's got to be a print, it's a font, right?
That's handwriting. I look like an engineer. I think you do. We digress. Do we have a motion?
I do have a motion and a second.
You're going to make one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Number Twenty is an application for a beer-wine off-premises license by Dustin Hewitt, MMCS Services LLC, DBA Bay Shores Market Store, 689, located at 9990 Fairup Avenue.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
They just buy everything in town?
Yeah, I guess so. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Number Twenty-One is a request from Willie Williams, President of Ballin County Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Committee, Inc., requesting permission for a parade/march beginning at 10:30 a.m. on January 16, 2023 for the celebration of Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, to close the streets, use of the Fairup Civic Center for program after the march, and use of the Rotary Youth Club after the program for children fun play area until 4 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is, I guess, mayor, is everything in order with this request?
Everything is in order. What I will remind you, that it does ask for waiver of fees. In 2017, we did not waive the fees. We, we charged them a nonprofit rate.
I would think that we would grant it the same way we grant all the other nonprofits, and that is to pay the, you know, the discounted fees for a nonprofit.
Yeah, I don't think we have...
I don't, I think by ordinance, we can't. In fact, we don't have to say it, because by ordinance, we can't waive them.
That's correct.
That's why it's not on there.
That's why it's not on there. But in the letter, it does request that, so I just want to be careful that we clarify that for the minutes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, number one, by ordinance, we can't waive the fees. You know, but, but even in the event, and I think part of that design is, because if you do waive fees for one organization, how do you determine who to waive before and not to? So it's, I think that's probably by design. All right, and we have, we have provided them with the nonprofit rate for this rental, is that correct?
We will, yes.
We will, okay, okay. And then no issues with the streets and whatnot. That's for, that's for the Civic Center rental, though, right?
Correct.
All right, any other issues with the streets closure or anything else for that day? All right. All right, counsel, I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item Number Twenty-Two is public participation for, anything else on your mind?
Gary Gober again. I just want to briefly talk about the crosswalk across US 98 at Gaffer. There's a project underway now to add additional turn lanes, particularly on the eastbound approach to 98 from Gaffer. It's the case that there is, on the northbound side of US 98, a breakdown lane, which some drivers are using as a no-stop right turn on red. And that creates a very dangerous situation for users of the crosswalk, when there is sufficient traffic that all of the northbound lanes are filled with waiting vehicles. Then people that are using the crosswalk to cross from the west side, particularly to the east, cannot see what's going on, coming, coming up the breakdown lane. And it can be a vehicle that doesn't intend to stop and is making a right turn through the red light. That is an extremely dangerous situation. My grandchildren attended intermediate school at what is now Elementary East, and every day, they cross that intersection, and many times, they had real close calls with these people attempting these right turns through that breakdown lane. That breakdown lane should not be used by traffic. What should be done is to remove the surface and, and close that for use by vehicles, the way is done at many other intersections up and down Reno. So I'd just like to recommend that we figure out how to get that done before somebody gets killed.
Gary, I, I travel that intersection. I'm still trying to visualize. You said it's on the northbound lane of 98?
The northbound lane...
So if you're turning right on Gaffer?
On the very far right is a breakdown lane.
I just can't visualize what this breakdown lane is for some reason. Maybe I just...
I sent an email with a photograph.
I looked at it, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
It's a, it's, it's marked by a solid white line on the right side of the roadway. Between that white line and the curb is enough width for a vehicle.
Turning right on Gaffer.
It was intended to be for broken-down vehicles.
Look at it today. I'll look at it today.
Okay, but people are using it as an, as a turning lane. And there's a serious conflict with pedestrian, bicyclists, disabled people using the crosswalk. All right.
Thank you, Gary. Any other public participation? All right, seeing none, I will close public participation, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.